Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with a special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board. And roll call, please.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Board Member LaGee.
Here.
Board Member Tolles.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Yates.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair, Magazine.
Here.
And Board Member DePorter, I don't believe is with us quite yet.
Okay. And do we have any speaker cards for call to the public?
No, Chairman.
Okay. Consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes of June 1st, 2017. There's no staff report. Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of resolution, E M C F D, 2017-03, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the district, subject to add for laurum taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget, specifically for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bond indebtedness, all for fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2018. Okay, can I get a speaker card? Make a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and a motion to adjourn the District Board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. And now we have the special session of the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board. Roll call, please, Beth.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Chair, Magazine.
Here.
Board Member DePorter's not present yet. Board Member Yates.
Present.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Tolles.
Here.
And Board Member LaGee.
Any speaker cards? Any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 1st, 2017. There's no staff report. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of resolution, C M G, 2017-01, assessing upon the individual lots and parcels within the district, a certain sum sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget to provide funds for maintenance of certain pedestrian areas, parking and parkways, all for fiscal year July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. Any speaker cards on that?
No, Chair.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And now a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. And now, we move into our regular meeting, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. For our invocation tonight, Pastor Rod Warrenburg is here from the Desert Creek Fellowship Church.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, I come before you tonight in Jesus' name. Father, I invoke the name over this meeting. Father, I ask for your blessing and the task that lie before this council. Father, I pray that you would bless their efforts with clarity and insight. Father, I ask that you would bless their deliberation with wisdom, and Father, I ask that you would bless their decisions with impartiality, in accordance with what's best for our community and the people who live here. Father, I ask for your help tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. The roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember LaGee.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
And Councilmember DePorter's not present yet.
He's trying.
He's trying to call in.
There's another number, he says it's not working.
All right, while you're doing that, I will go on to read a proclamation declaring August 2017 drowning impact awareness month in town of Fountain Hills. And just reminding everybody that the reason we're doing it at this meeting is because we will not be meeting as a council in July or in the first meeting in August. We do that every year to allow staff and council to schedule vacations. Whereas drowning impact awareness month will raise awareness that the number and impact of child drownings in Arizona affects everyone. And whereas the drowning incidents in Arizona take the lives of the equivalent of a classroom of children each year. And whereas a child drowning can happen to any family regardless of education, race, or socio-economic background. And whereas families can take simple steps to protect their children around water to avoid the tragedy of the unnecessary loss of life. And whereas water safety remains a priority for Arizona families, communities, and government. And whereas keeping children healthy and safe is the goal of the Fountain Hills Roar Metro Fire Department and other prevention institutions in Arizona. And whereas raising awareness will increase understanding and education of effective ways to prevent drowning. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2017 as drowning awareness, drowning impact awareness month in Fountain Hills. But of course, we will start right now. And thank the fire department for all of your efforts, and thank you for, we're all wearing the drowning impact awareness purple pins today to advertise this. And it'd be great if everybody kind of wore them around town and reminded people also. All right, next is...
Now joining.
Ah, Councilman DePorter, are you with us?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Okay, I'll start with, I will review recent events in economic development, and then if anybody else has an update on any of their meetings, we can go to their. Mayor's and Supervisors Meeting of the Greater Economic Council, it's also known as GPEC. It took place a few weeks ago. At that meeting, we all got an update on future corporations that are interested in relocating to Arizona. Most are coming from California, as you probably guessed. You all also probably know the reasons, higher taxes in California, more restrictions on building and operating a business. I also attended the Maricopa Association of Governments Economic Development Meeting. The agenda topics mostly dealt with interstate corridors and the freight trucking industry related to its contributions to the economy, technology changes in freight, and the availability of high-paying jobs. They wanted us to know that there's a shortage of drivers for the freight industry, and they were trying to get the word out that they need a lot more drivers. It's good to know that the jobs are there for those who are qualified and seeking employment. And that is my E D C report. And now we will go on to call to the public. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And we have 12 items for consent agenda. Could I get a motion to accept as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you. Okay. Regular agenda item, consideration of appointing three citizens to serve on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission for a two-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2019. I move to appoint John McHugh, Dana Sarr, and Scott Schlossberg to serve on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, each to serve a two-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2019. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any speaker cards on this item? Okay, and I just want to mention that Dana has been on this commission since 2013, and so he's going to go again for another two years. John McHugh was appointed in 2016 to fill a short vacancy, but now he's going for the full term. You know, it's great to have people on this who have already been on for a while. We know they give up a lot of their free time for this commission, but it's great to have those that are on it, especially Dana's been on so long because he has the past history, and he can also help out the newer members to bring them up to speed. And the newest member will be Scott Schlossberg, and of course, we welcome him as a new member, having a new perspective on the commission is always welcome. And so, all in favor of these three?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
And any of them here? I don't see them. Okay. Well, congratulations to all three, and on behalf of the council, we thank you for your volunteer service. For items 14 and 15, there will be one staff report. All speaker cards submitted for 14 and 15 will be called on during the public hearing for 14. I open the public hearing to receive comments on a request for a special use permit to allow a 25-foot-tall golf ball fence to be installed at 16932 East Monterey Drive, located in the R-135 Single Family Residential Zoning District, 35,000 square feet per dwelling unit zoning district. And we're going to, Grady?
Yes, we're going to have our senior planner, Marissa Moore. Go ahead and give the staff report on this particular issue.
Um, okay, I got that. Okay, I was trying to get the planner to where... Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a special use permit application. It was submitted by Bressel Builders. On behalf of Dorothy Crumanis.
Marissa.
For a special use permit.
Marissa.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
To permit a protective golf ball net to be installed at 16932 East Monterey Drive, and this is pursuant to the zoning ordinance 509A1. Kind of hard to see on here, but her property is, it's a flag lot, so it's a driveway here, and then her property is, the house is located here. It's along the 14th Fairway and the Desert Canyon Golf Course, and it is approximately 330 feet from the tee boxes down here. This slide shows you where the net is proposed to be located. So when you're, the tee boxes are down here, when you're looking, it's there, and then the tee boxes are in this area when you're looking at it, in this one. So it will be along the east side of the home. This is then a site plan showing, you know, where it would be located on the property, again. It's proposed to be approximately 94 feet long, 25 feet tall, and have black netting with green poles, so it will match the area. These pictures show some damage that was done to the property by golf balls for not having this fence. It's hit a skylight, the roof tiles, and it's kind of hard to see from here. You can probably see it on your screens, there are a lot of holes in the stucco on the side, and they've shown other pictures to us, so this was just kind of a sample. They also mentioned that when they're out in their pool area, they're concerned about getting hit by these golf balls. So staff presented to the planning and zoning board, they recommended approval, and then staff also recommends approval to approve this golf ball fence at 16932 East Monterey Drive as presented.
Okay. I can tell you, this house is really hard to find. Because I went down there to look, and I saw the notice, and I parked on the road, and then I said, "Okay, now where's the house?" And then I see this, like, looks like a path, but I'm not sure I can drive on it, and so I figure, "Oh, I'll get out and walk." Well, in 105 degrees, that was not the smartest move, because coming back, it's all uphill, but I was able to see the house and how low it is, right, on the golf course. And then when I drove around, you can really see it better from the other side on the road where the golf course comes out, and then you can see it really low down there. But I can see why they have a problem, because they're very, very close. They're just right there. They could probably sell golf balls and cold drinks from their backyard, they're so close.
There's a less expensive way to do this. I mean, don't let anybody with higher than a five-e钮...
[laughing]
Play golf. I mean, that would solve the problem.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, we'll keep that in mind. Okay, are there any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to council discussion. Yes, Councilman Yates.
Thanks, Marissa. I didn't see any letters of opposition, did no walk-ups or any phone calls or anything like that? That's about the only other thing.
No, sir.
We've dealt with this before, and this is the best way to deal with it, so excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then with that, I will close the public hearing. Okay, and where are we? Sorry, catch up with myself. Consideration of request for a special use permit is just discussed. Any further council discussion? No, then I can have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. Are the applicants here? Anywhere? No?
He's in the back row, right in front of Jason.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
John Bressel.
Oh, is he related to? Oh, okay.
Jack's son.
So Jack's son, okay. We're going to skip, Bob, we're going to skip to item 19, which is the visitor center. Because of our request, it's just by request, so I'm bumping that up now. So we're going to go to 19, everybody. Consideration of participating as a partner in the proposed Fountain Hills Visitor Center to be located next door to the new Chamber of Commerce location on Verde River Drive and the Avenue of the Fountains. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you recall that during the budget deliberations, there was a supplemental budget request for the Town of Fountain Hills to participate with the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce for a jointly operated visitor center. That council, the whole discussion during that time on that particular topic wasn't the validity of this, it was really, it came up to a question of whether the construction of Park Place would be done in time. This facility would be located in Park Place, basically at Verde Drive and the Avenue of the Fountains. When this was originally proposed, it was a budget request, and I had anticipated coming back to council at a later date on a operating agreement that would spell out all the, you know, the expectations between the two organizations as to the function and operation of the visitor center. Unfortunately, due to the fact that the building will be opening sometime later this year, we don't know exactly when, they have requested to start to sign leases. And so, the issue or concern is, is that the Chamber of Commerce is eager to do that for their office space that they have identified, but it kind of puts them in a bad situation because it's risky for them to go ahead and sign up for the additional 500 square feet and lease that if the town is going to be on board with this visitor center. I also want to remind the council that in the council-approved Tourism Strategic Plan, there was a goal that basically said that the town would support, in an ongoing fashion, a visitor center. Now, of course, that was done at the time and approved by council last September, at the time that we didn't know that there was going to be a change in the location of the visitor center. But I will tell you that the staff and I were looking at a variety of different sites for visitor center, and the cost for a visitor center with the leasing and setup and, you know, other startup costs was going to be roughly, you know, $36,000 for approximately the lease and utilities and things of that sort, and then there was going to be some equipping of that with tenant improvements and such. So, we started having a discussion with the executive director of the chamber, who, by the way, is here tonight along with the board president, Paul Perot. And so, they're here, so after I'm done talking, if you want to have any questions asked of them, they will be here to answer any questions. But I understand at the time, the council was just considering that, you know, maybe the timing wasn't good because it looked like maybe we wouldn't have this visitor center open during the next fiscal year. But due to timing, we needed to bring this back to your consideration. If you just flat-out said no, we wouldn't be bringing this back to you tonight. So, that is why this is before you tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Also, I know that our interim community services director, Ms. Goodwin, is here tonight. If you have any questions of her about the staff, about this as well, she's here and prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Grady. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No.
Did, Scott, did you want to make any kind of statement before we continue? Is there anything? Please, come up.
And if I may, we are planning on bringing forth a operating agreement, so one of the things that I just want to let you know is, we're looking at targeting the one and only meeting in August to bring that back. But again, there's this timing factor with having to get leases signed, and so that's why that's not quite ready yet.
Okay. Scott?
Vice Mayor and Town Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of this partnership. We've talked at length about the ability to truly market...
Just identify yourself first.
Excuse me, not, I'm sorry, I'm Scott Soldat Valenzuela, CEO of the Fountain Hills Chamber. We've talked at length with town staff about the importance of having a visitor's center and being able to connect with visitors and really showcase Fountain Hills in a way that a website just can't do. Websites and videos are very useful and helpful, but people want to talk to locals. They want to go into a beautiful center, receive a bottle of water, be directed to the places, the best things to see, art, know when the fountain's going off, and a variety of other things that they come here for. And we can provide that. And I know for a fact that we can exceed your expectations when it comes to providing that with trained staff and volunteers, along with a center that has very, I think, limited responsibility for you, other than staff involvement in training and making sure that our volunteers are using the right messaging and talking about the right things that are going on, telling them about town events that are coming up. The chamber's willing to assume, you know, the insurance, the utilities, CAM charges, operations, tenant improvements, and staffing of the center.
That's all.
So there's a number of costs that you would not have to bear, in addition to signing a lease in a resident, or, excuse me, a commercial project, in a prime location where we think we will see lots of pedestrians, as well as have parking up front for drive-up traffic. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Scott's up here, any questions for Scott? Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Scott, the amount, as I understand, is $30,000 from the town, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me how you came up with that number? Or who came up with that number?
We looked at the cost of operating the center, along with some of the staff involvement that we would need to have, technology, computers, phones, along with the rent that, you know, we're required to pay. And we developed that number as an ongoing annual, an amount that would allow us to really do a great job of operating that center.
You said an ongoing amount. I guess I misunderstood. I thought that that $30,000, the first year included build-out and so on.
It does. So this would be an annual, you would have the opportunity to annually review this amount and approve it again, but this is the annual amount that we're asking for to be able to provide this.
I'm really just trying to understand. If the build-out is complete, why would it be the same amount the next year?
We're assuming the responsibility for the tenant improvements. That's not part of the $30,000.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought part of that was for the tenant improvements.
No, I apologize if that wasn't clear.
No, you didn't say that. I just, I thought that was the case.
We're assuming all of that.
There's a couple different things here, just to clarify. So, there's tenant improvements, which are, you know, electrical, plumbing, flooring, ceiling, panels, lighting, all that. So that's the base type of tenant improvements. And then there's what I call the equipping. So, that would be the customizations that we would have in there, such as the racks and the, you know, we'd have some seating areas and things of that sort as well. So, those would be added as well, so...
I don't mean to sound picky, I'm really trying to understand. The, all of the you just described, is that $30,000?
So what we believe and what we were targeting, based on the fact that we knew that this center was supposed to be, what we believed was going to be opening in November, and based on, some folks, they believe it'll be later, but we were going to use a portion of the $30,000 to cover the cost of the rent, and then a big chunk was going to go towards getting it equipped and ready, and the town's portion was in this $30,000 number.
And that's where my question comes in.
Yes.
Then why is it $30,000 the next year?
I don't believe we said that. I think he said it's going to be up for review of what that might be. If I, did I misunderstand that?
It'll be up for review each year.
Okay.
So what we want to do, if I can make it more clear, is that Scott and I talked today because there had been some council inquiries and questions about this, and I think the way that is best to handle this is that we will come back in 12 months, after 12 months of successful operations, and report back, you know, our findings and give you a better handle on what those costs are. You know, and we'll probably do that as part of the, you know, how you get the regular, you know, tourism updates, we'll probably do it as part of that. And we will build that into the operating agreement I just mentioned. So when we come back to you in August, we'll have that built in there, so you have some assurances. We'll talk about what the initial outlay will be, and then we'll probably have to amend that agreement, you know, after about a year, so we have a good idea, and we'll bring that back to council. I mean, agreements can only be approved by council, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman DePorter?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my question was around the $30,000, and maybe you all have this in front of you, and I apologize if I'm not there in person. I prefer to see a little bit more of a breakdown of what's in that $30,000. I've never worked for any organization that's entered into a partnership, so it's kind of intended like that, so perhaps that's there, and if it's there, my apologies, but let's do that. The second, the whole second year, I'm not sure that we need to, every year, I think we should come to the table with helping them come up with that actual number, instead of the chamber just deciding, well, this year it's $27,000, or next year it's $25,000, we just discuss it. We just need a little more, I know we originally budgeted $30,000, we thought we were going to do something in our own building, but that's when we were going to have more control. So, for this $30,000, we're getting a lot more, because we're going to get it added to the chamber, but we also lose some control, we don't have staff, we're using their trained staff, not our own, which is a good thing, because we won't have to pay. But, just my thoughts around just having a little more details about what exactly the $30K is covering, and then what next year's going to look like, even if it's written out like, next year, in 12 months, we're going to come back and review it, and the financials will be discussed again as a team, so that we're not waiting for the chamber to tell us what it is, you know, just because I think we should come up with numbers together in partnership, right? So, that's just my initial thought. $30,000, sounds great, but we're still paying, you know, and Scott and them are covering a lot of costs, but it's still $30K, so I just wanted to be pretty clear. I think it's a good deal, because we're going to have a presence, but something to consider.
I couldn't get all of what he said, but...
Councilmember DePorter, I got the gist of what you were saying, and I just want to let you know, we weren't talking about coming back every year, but for the first full 12 months of operations, we would have a better handle. We do know, and we'll try to do that in the operating agreement, what the breakdown is. We generally know right now what the cost per square foot is for rent, so that's very obvious. But there's some variable costs, and right now, as I understand, part of the challenge for the chamber is that with the builder, they're going to be proceeding with the builder to do their tenant improvements, and they don't even know really from the builder what their tenant improvements are. So, there's some variable costs here that if we knew, we would have a breakdown, and we would certainly include that, but at this point, we don't. And again, this is, it's a chicken and the egg kind of thing that we're in right now. And again, I was planning on getting the budget approved for an amount, it wasn't necessarily going to be $30,000 every single year, and then we were going to come back with an operating agreement, and I'm hoping in that operating agreement, we have a lot more details that will make the council feel more comfortable with this. But at the same time, the chamber's taking a risk on going off and doing a lease, and if the town pulls out, then they're on the hook for 500 square feet of space that they'll have to be on the hook for, so...
Grady, just one quick question, and this, the town goes into this agreement with the chamber. It will be for all businesses in Fountain Hills, not just restricted to the chamber members?
Absolutely. In fact, Scott and I've had that discussion, and he, you know, obviously, the chamber would like to have it that way, just because, you know, that's one of the benefits of the membership, they do a lot to advocate for their members. But he understands from the town's perspective, for us to be able to put any resources into this, it has to be open to those entities that are promoting tourism in our town and in the region. So, good point that you brought up.
Okay. And Councilman Yates?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, maybe it would help to put this in perspective, although we didn't go with this as a capital improvement project, the space we had over here, we were considering doing, uh, economic development, tourism. We hardbid that, and it came back at seventy-five thousand. Our former, um, um, uh, Planning Director budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, and that's before we staff it and put any, what's called FFNE furniture fixture and equipment. Thirty thousand's a steal to have, and I, I agree with Councilman DePorter, that kind of we want an itemized steal, but conceptual to have a spot on Avenue of the Fountains, uh, to have a concierge service, whether it's volunteer or, or your staff in there, just to tell people, there's City Hall, there's the post office, there's the, the fountain, is a tremendous asset. And I loved it when it was over at, uh, the, the Chamber location, but as you know, that was more destination location. You have to know where the Chamber is, pull into the parking lot, go in and ask questions, whereas on Avenue, as we're all anticipating, that's going to be kind of the center of activity. Um, we're probably going to have trailblazing signs down there, once everything's set down, and actually say, "Tourism" right here, and we'll have that opportunity. So, thirty thousand is a steal for anything, any kind of commercial operation. I anticipate this to be a huge success, and it's vital for us, both on economic development, tourism, um, our marketing efforts, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of this, and I know you're not going to do any tenant improvement for thirty thousand dollars. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, and Grady, uh, just one more clarification, uh, on weekends and when the Chamber is, is closed, people who are there for a Sunday event, or, you know, one of the different events we have, they will still have access to the visitor's center?
That is correct. One of the cool things that, um, that the Director and, and the staff and I have talked about is that, so, there's going to be a pass-through between the, the Chamber building on the interior, so there will be an opening, but it will have the ability to, to do a lockout. So, on evenings and weekends and during special events, um, that they can be closed, and then, the, the visitor's center will be open. And we've talked about during in-season, during major things like the Great Fair and, and things like that, that, that would be awesome to have that open. And so, we're all on the same page on that.
Okay.
So, that would be one of the features of the visitor's center.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Councilman LaGaye?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, it's good to see you in council chambers, as well as, as well as the board members. I, I can't recall seeing all of you here, and, ever, actually, so it's, it's, it's nice to have you here. We know we have a, a tourism strategy, and the tourism strategy talks about partnering with the Chamber, um, in, in a variety of ways. And frankly, I believe we already have a partnership. So, just kind of cutting, cutting to the chase, um, with respect to spaces we've looked at, the fact that it's part of our strategy, um, I'm, you know, pretty much on board with everything I'm hearing. The only thing I'm uncomfortable with is spending taxpayers' dollars without having an operating agreement. I don't think it's a good business practice. It's not a criticism of you, it's not a criticism of the Board, it's just, to me, not a good business practice. We're talking, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the course of five years plus. So, no criticism of what you've offered, what the cost is or anything, but being accountable to constituents, we don't typically oper, uh, engage in spending taxpayer dollars without having an operating agreement. So, that, with that being said, is there any possibility we could work some type of compromise? In other words, um, we are going on a break for a bit here, we'll be convening again on, is it August seventeen? Is there any possible way that the Board could consider, you could all consider, working your final decision, cutting a little slack here, so we could actually come back, let's say, August seventeenth? I'm not sure what the timeline is, I'm not sure how anxious, um, the, the owner is, is to rent these spaces, I, I, I don't know if many of them have been rented, et cetera. So, um, just want to make it clear, I'm on board with what you're all proposing, and, and the cost, we've done a cost analysis, I've had an opportunity to talk to our town manager about all this, seems like it works, but just the notion, and just putting it back in your lap, looking at the Board member, I don't think you would engage in spending Board member, your, your constituents' dollars, uh, without some type of legal agreement that's going to be binding in, in, in long-term. And, um, so those are my comments. On board, but uncomfortable moving forward. Um, if I was to make a motion, it would be, uh, to approve the concept contingent on the approval of a, um, operating agreement, to be brought forth by the town manager on August seventeenth and agreed to by the council. That's my perspective. Thank you for being here.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I concur. I've had the same concerns, and I did talk to Grady about it. It's sort of like a blank check. And I guess I have a question for Andrew. Let's, in a situation like this, I think you have to look at worst case. What's the worst thing that can happen? In other words, let's say we vote, I like that smile. We, uh, we vote to have this joint venture, uh, an operating agreement comes back, just for the sake of, and I support it, okay, but just for the sake of discussion, we have some serious...
Use your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have some serious concerns about it, and it takes time and so on and so forth. Do you see any downside, anything that you care to talk about?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, the, the downside of that is more of a downside for the Chamber if the motion is conditioned as the way that Councilman LaGaye has indicated, because then, if the operating agreement isn't acceptable, then the expenditure can't be made. So, um, it's pretty much all the risk on the Chamber at that point, honestly.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was, wasn't that long ago, um, matter of a few years, that the Town Council used to, um, we had a kind of a, I don't even know if it was a written agreement, where we would fund the visitor's center, and I believe that was to a tune of fifty thousand dollars. And then, the, um, Chamber put in fifty thousand, and that's when, um, that's when your predecessor was the CEO. So, that went on for many, many years, that, that agreement, and that was, um, just out of the building that you have there right now, so... And, and I guess the other question is, and the other thing we have to consider, is that if we don't do this agreement with, with the Chamber, then we will have no visitor's center, because we certainly can't afford what it will cost to, um, renovate the room that we have, and we're also not in, it wouldn't be that great a setup, because we're not on, in the busiest part of the avenue and not as visible. So, if we don't do it, we have to consider that there will be no visitor's center, and I don't think that I have ever gone to a city or a town that doesn't have one. And I was just up in Prescott a couple of weeks ago, and it was on a Sunday, and they had a little fair going on in their square, and there was their visitor's center open with lots of stuff, trying to get people to come back and, you know, don't forget, in a couple of weeks, we've got this going on, and, you know, they were, they were open with all those tourists. So, you know, I think visitor's center is very, very important. I think that Grady's done a lot of due diligence on this, working with, um, working with Scott. So, I am, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. Any other discussion? Councilman Tolles?
Thank you. I would just concur, I think this is a great idea, and I think it's well worth the money. And if you look at the plans, it appears to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the twelve hundred square feet unit is going to be built out as the visitor's space, and then, there'll be double doors to the Chamber new offices that are approximately twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Uh, no, the, the visitor's center will be five hundred square feet. Uh, the Chamber's entire suite will be three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet. So, that five hundred is part of the...
So, you're, so you're looking at, what is it, R one oh two and then R one oh three? So, in your, in your diagram here, R one oh three is eleven hundred and twenty-two square feet total, you're using the back of that room for storage, and then, the front will be the visitor's center with the visitor desk, and then, you have double doors going into R one oh two, which is eleven hundred and ninety-one square feet, according to your chart here. Is that correct?
That, the way you described it is correct. The Chamber will be using all of that additional space, other than the five hundred square feet, uh, the storage room, which is included, you know, this is a, a, a diagram to try to, for the point of conversation, in a restroom.
So, you're going to, you're going to be providing, as you do now, the volunteer staff to staff the visitor's center, town staff, and possibly our Parks Department may come down and do special events there, and you're going to have the fair, and you're going to have functions that, you're going to have storefront activity. And on the weekends, it's an open door, I'm assuming there's some type of security that's going to watch the facility. If it's not staffed, is, it's still open? It's a, it's a, also a way to the garage entrance, right?
It will only be open if it's staffed, with a volunteer or a staff member.
Okay. So, weekends, it's only nine to one, according to your initial...
It's a suggested time. I, I think we have to experiment with usage. If, if we're open Saturdays in January and no one comes in the doors, well, maybe that's not the right time to be open. But if we're really busy, we'll be open more.
So, let me give you a hypothetical. You have someone that is in the real estate industry in town, and they say, you know what? Love to volunteer at our visitor's center. You, you would allow, or would it be in the, it, would it be acceptable that a Realtor or maybe somebody else in a field that, meeting people and networking is their business, that they would have the doors open in the visitor's center and continue to staff it, potentially? Because when people visit our town, eh, I think they're coming on the weekends a lot of times. So, if we're going to have a visitor's center, we want the visitor's center open on the weekends. So, I just want to know that we're maximizing the use of the space with the amount of money that we're putting forth to do it. I'm, I'm totally in favor of the proposal, and I think it's a great idea. I think we have to have those doors open, though, on the weekends.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman LaGaye?
Thank you. Hey, Scott, off, offhand, Executive Director, do you know what the cost of the five hundred square feet would be to rent, for example, if we did that independently?
Well, you can't, I doubt Park Place would rent you five hundred square feet, they'd probably rent you eleven hundred and twenty-two, which is that full space.
Is that pretty much the...
And that's, uh, about eighteen thousand a year, I believe.
Okay.
It's fifteen dollars a foot is the listed price of space in that project.
Very, very good, and, you know...
Plus utilities, CAM charges, rent increases every year, and insurance.
Our Town Attorney, Mayor, if I may, the, our Town Attorney talked about risk earlier, and, and I understand the risk to the Chamber and the Board, given your scenario. My proposal was simply saying, we're talking six, six weeks here, you guys have a drop-dead date, you, this has to be done by June thirtieth? I believe the staff report or our conversation said June, um, was it June thirtieth? Yeah, uh, June thirtieth. So, we're talking August seventeenth, that's asking for some leeway for you all to continue negotiations and make your final decisions, um, on the eighteenth, after we have our council meeting, is, is that even a possibility?
Our concern is that the projected completion date for our space is November. So, that leaves us with some variables for the next, you know, six weeks, eight weeks, however long it takes.
So, that's why you're saying you need to do this...
We're, we're already in negotiations with Park Place.
Yeah.
And would like to get to a, uh, final decision, so that our Board can move forward and not postpone, um, our move as well.
Once again, I want to make this perfectly clear to the Board and, and the public, I will have difficulty at this time, um, agreeing to the partnership, because we're spending taxpayer dollars. I'm hoping that on the seventeenth, an agreement comes back that I feel comfortable with. And looking historically and working on this council with the Chamber over the years, and working with tourism, we did have very specific contracts. And those contracts were very specific in terms of how the dollars would be spent, and what, I think it was Mark McGivern was the Director at that time. So, yeah, so, we did a contract then, uh, it was kind of loosey, but there was a contract, and it was very specific in that regard, so, thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. It certainly does sound like to me that, uh, the council is, is leaning towards supporting all this, and I would like to think, as Councilmember LaGaye just pointed out, in the past, we've always managed to work out an, uh, an acceptable agreement between the town and Chamber, and I would like to think that, uh, with the, with the effort that you're putting forward, that if there was a little hiccup somewhere along the road, that we would be able to work it out, and I would certainly think that we should move this forward, and, uh, as Councilman LaGaye just put out, we need to move this forward with the stipulation that we still have to have an agreement prior to. But it certainly does sound like to me that we've got full support from the council.
Mayor and Council, um, to that point, I mean, all along, we were planning on having operating agreement. So, if, in the suggested motion, if you were to go ahead and also add, with the understanding that a, um, operating agreement would come back to council in August, I think that would take care of the concerns I'm hearing here.
Councilman Yates?
Would that satisfy your needs?
Yes. We, we want an operating agreement as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we want to work out all the details, so that everything, so that at the end of the year, you're patting us on the back and applauding, saying, what a fantastic job you did, so...
Madam, my only other suggestion was just to line item it just towards build-out and, and then come back with an operating agreement, and then we would have that discussion later. It's semantics, but at least we know what we're getting, as opposed to that. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the contingent motion, if, if...
Just for... No, just for, and, there, well, there is no motion right now.
Right.
Right?
Conceptual.
But just, you're talking about just, we're talking about just that there would be an operating agreement?
Yes.
No, nothing specific as of yet, okay. Anyone else have any comment? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
So, just so I understand this, when I said suggested motion, um, in the council packet, it says, "Move to approve authorizing the town of Fountain Hills to move forward in partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and a jointly operated Fountain Hills Visitor Center," and come back with an operating agreement for council action in August. Is that...
Okay, so moved, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Lots of balloons.
And open on a weekend.
Thanks, Paul, and your other Board members for attending. All right, so now, we go back to sixteen, okay? For item sixteen and seventeen, there will be one staff report. Speaker cards, if any, are submitted during item sixteen, if, for sixteen and seventeen, will be, um, will be heard during sixteen. With that, I will open the public hearing. To receive comments on ordinance seventeen dash oh six, proposed text amendment to Chapter Five, Section Five, five nineteen of the Fountain Hills zoning ordinance and Article Six, Section six point oh nine B point six of the Fountain Hills subdivision ordinance related to the installation and continued maintenance of landscaping within the front and side, street-side yards, areas of developed lots. Case number Z two zero one seven dash oh five.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And Bob, you're up.
Ordinance seventeen oh six addresses the long-term maintenance and landscaping on lots that have frontage on town streets. The ordinance addresses two concerns, commercial properties and residential properties. Regarding commercial properties, new development is required to provide landscape and irrigation plans as part of their building permit applications now. Once approved, they're required to install the landscaping and ensure that it stays alive for at least one year. This has generally been sufficient. However, recently, some commercial properties have cleared the landscaping along their street frontages, with no intention of replacement, and this has generated some concerns about the town's aesthetic character in the long run. Ordinance seventeen oh six, amend section five nineteen of the zoning ordinance, so that general maintenance and trimming of street front landscaped areas will still be allowed, but it will also require that those areas must remain landscaped, and any significant changes must be permitted in a similar manner as the original landscaping permit. Additionally, there will be no, no longer be a one-year limit on the landscaping requirement, simply removing the landscaping along commercial frontage will no longer be allowed, regardless of how long it's actually been on the site. Regarding residential, new building permit applications for house construction contain complete landscape and irrigation plans as part of their submittal today. This requirement has occasionally caused delays because many applicants didn't provide those initially. Residential landscaping can also be very personalized, and each new house has different designs or the applicants aren't sure really what they want before their house is actually built. Ordinance 1706, amend Section 609 of the subdivision ordinance so that rather than requiring full landscape and irrigation plans with the building permit application, there will only be a requirement that the plans show a minimum number of plantings along the front and/or street side of the property. Right now, that number has been recommended to be 12 plants along the front and at least six alongside, street sides. The number of plantings, not the specific plant type, will be verified during the final inspection. The type and size of the plants will still be left up to the individual homeowner's discretion and or sometimes an HOA's requirements. These changes will make the review, approval, and enforcement of continued maintenance and of these properties much easier for staff to monitor while still providing the residents with a great deal of flexibility in their landscaping designs. Planning and zoning commission forwarded a recommendation to approve this amendment. The staff also recommends the council approve ordinance 1706 as presented.
Okay, thanks. And this all came about because there was one commercial establishment in town that took down a whole bunch of wonderful, beautiful trees. And I got lots of complaints over that. But, okay, questions to clarify anything? Go ahead.
Just to, most municipalities have some sort of ordinance pertaining to this, especially on the commercial properties. Tempe, I have quite a few buildings in Tempe and they actually have someone counting trees. So this is absolutely in line with with what's going on out there, and I agree 100 percent. The way you've done, dealt with this is is A1, so I'm full support.
Right. And and I like the fact that we're still letting single-family people who have bought their homes, they did everything they were supposed to do when they built it, but then they basically can take care of their own landscaping as long as they don't remove all their plants, correct?
We're not interfering with normal day-to-day maintenance. We just want to make sure that there's something out there.
Good, okay. Councilman Tollis?
I think this is excellent that this is being addressed and I think you did a good job in writing it. And I'd just like to make a motion and move this forward. So I'd like to move to the Town Council, approve ordinance 1706, requiring continuous maintenance of front and street-side landscaping on properties in Fountain Hills as presented by staff.
I'll second.
And speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman LaJaye?
Thank you. So Bob, I know that this has gone through P and Z and they vetted it, which is is great. They look at these things thoroughly. I guess what comes to mind is is enforcement. Is this going to be complaint-driven or are we going to be proactive in following up six months after a construction project is? I mean, I understand during the the review of the project itself, where they're on-site looking at these things, but help me out with that. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about, I mean, I'm on board with the concept, but I'm just concerned about enforcement. Has that been brought up or discussed? And there are just so many things in this town that go unenforced, and this adds one more to that, so.
This is really addressing landscaping for new development and then ongoing, mainly in the commercial areas. So that would be more or less complaint-driven if it's after the fact. But the new development requiring X number of plants be planted before they get their final inspection is is kind of the enforcement upfront. But yes, it's going to be complaint-driven. We can't drive around.
Okay, that answers my question. I understand on the front end, when we're involved in the project, that's that's a no-brainer, but but down the road, you're saying it will be complaint-driven?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance 17-06 as just presented. And any further council discussion? And at this point, Councilman Tollis, could you repeat your motion?
Move that the Town Council approve ordinance 1706, requiring continuous maintenance of front and street-side landscaping on properties in Fountain Hills as presented.
I will second again.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Consideration of authorizing staff to initiate specific fiscal year 2017-18 capital improvement projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you recall that back in March, when we had the special session related to capital projects, there was a lot of discussion on the proposed projects that we had in the capital improvement budget. And during that discussion, the council directed the manager to bring back to the council these projects before we would go ahead and initiate action and follow through on those after the budget's been adopted. So we have our first batch of projects that are identified in the staff report before you tonight. Normally, just just so that you understand what the normal protocols have been in the past, is that once the council goes through the planning process and approves the the budget, then the staff has gone ahead and followed through on that. But this is a, this was a little bit different than what the norm has been, and so I just want to make you aware of that. So, and I think there were some some reasons perhaps during the development of this year's capital improvement budget that may not exist in going forward. So hopefully, maybe if I can maybe have in the motion maybe to accept these and then maybe direct staff to move forward with the balance of the projects for the year. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Council discussion? Councilman Tollis?
Sure. Now, on some of these, I would think that there may be some further discussion. I'm just questioning whether it will come back to council in regards to conceptual, like, design concepts and specifically.
Absolutely. So anything that involves large contracts that are over 50,000 are obligated to come back. Something that I know the council's going to have interest in, such as the Plaza Fountain side, there's a lot of interest I've heard from individual council members. Anything of that sort, I will definitely be bringing back. There's going to be almost like a design charrette that we'll have with the landscape architect that will be working on this, but I know that I've heard from a number of council members that they would like to kind of see this done in phases and they'd like to kind of see really what the ultimate concept comes back at. And so I I think that we, you'll still continue to see these projects come back to you. It's just that right now, we have to seek preliminary approval before we even initiate any of these actions to be able to to get like a landscape architect or anything, and that's, it it really takes time, you know, to come to you first, get permission, and then go back and do that. So that's why that's, that question I I raised tonight.
And Grady, the video surveillance cameras, some of those are going to be put in the Centennial Circle because of the vandalism that we've experienced.
That is correct. In fact, that's a good question or or point that the mayor's brought up. Due to the concern that the kids are out of school, we started initiating, and that probably violated this this council intent. But I I saw this as an emergency thing where we needed to get moving on it because we've had a lot of vandalism in the area. So I took upon myself to actually get our IT director to have proposals come in, and we have one from a firm that we're we're working with right now. The idea was to try to get moving on it before the end of the fiscal year, and then if there's any money left over, then we'll start using that money for the parks for next year. As you know, we've had a lot of issues at Fountain Park and some of the other parks with vandalism.
And some of them have been to the artwork, which has been very expensive. That's on us now to repair that. And some of them also are almost impossible to repair. They do the best they can. There's also been vandalism outside the library and around the holidays. There was vandalism in the decorations that were put. So, you know, the amount that we're spending is probably going to be made up by not having to.
Right.
Not having to take care of the vandalism. Did I hear Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I recall in the original discussion about the CIP opposing spending money now to light up the avenue and for it perhaps in the future, but I was concerned about the cost at this time. I don't recall, I may have just missed it, discussing $100,000 for lighting simply so we can turn the holiday lights on at dusk and off at dawn. Can you talk about that?
Yes, we we did.
Yeah. We had quite a bit of discussion during the capital improvement. We we actually had one session just having to do with the lighting on the avenue. We talked about the lighting, the holiday lighting, refreshing what we do currently, and also some of the issues that we've been experiencing with the spider boxes. Those are the big junction boxes that for events, they can hook up and use the power. We've had issues where the the lights have shorted out. We've had issues with lighting on the avenue that are not decorative lighting. It's it's, you know, for street lighting and security and and such. So this $100,000 is going to address a lot of the issues that we've been having. Right now, we we leave this, the the holiday lights on during the daytime, which I I can't tell you how many complaints I get. It's because it's it's more efficient that way than to turn on each of the the numerous things because you can't have a centralized timer. This will fix that by doing it right at the electrical box.
Thank you. That explanation refreshes my memory. I do remember the discussion.
Okay.
And and you you remember that you personally nixed the allen lights?
Allen lights?
Yeah, around the trees.
I did, I know.
The allen lights? I told you they were going to be called the allen lights from now on. Any other? Councilman LaJaye?
Thank you, Mayor. Grady, first and foremost, just to clarify what you just stated, so it's beyond just the lighting. I want to make sure that the the public understands, we're looking at enhancing infrastructure as well, so that's that's what drove the cost up. And just one other comment, you said in a motion, you know, clarify the fact that those projects in queue may not be part of this list, but they're they're moving forward.
So so let me clarify that, just so that, so the council back in March said, before we move forward on any capital improvement projects, there was a confidence level at the time with some of the thoughts that went into the projects. And so anyways, we think we've got this corrected, and I think this is what I'm suggesting is that instead of coming back and bringing you batches of projects, let's go back to what we did previously, which is go through, debate these projects during the budget process, and then once you approve the budget, then we'll go ahead and go forward on these projects. When we need to come back for either council input on things like design considerations or on contract awards, they definitely are coming back to you. I'm not asking for carte blanche, just that we go back to the the standard operating procedure that we had previously.
Madam, Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
And thank you, you did a good job of clarifying that. I'm I'm on board with that, other than the way we bid these out and we keep bringing these up about going with, we establish what the threshold is of qualifications of all our vendors and then award the bid to the lowest, the lowest bid but meets a qualification. That's that's my biggest thing because so often, and this is what preempted this, is we were getting these bids back on things that were just, we weren't questioning the quality of the work, but quite frankly, just way too expensive for what we were receiving, and that's what prompted this.
Right. And it wasn't so much the bids, but it was the the engineer's estimate. It's like, I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely. So in that regard, I'm I'm okay with changing it to, I agree, it gets tedious and cumbersome for you to keep bringing back a lot of these projects. So I'm okay with that as long as that's in there, that we're going with, establish the qualifications and let's get the best bid we can on all these projects.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
Dennis?
Dennis.
Well, certainly.
You volunteered, too.
Authorize staff to initiate specific FY 2017, 16, 18, capital improvements projects.
Second.
We already have a second?
Oh, very good.
Second before the first.
Yes. I'm counting it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute a cooperation agreement, which will enable the Town of Fountain Hills to participate in the urban county community development block grant program administered by Miracopa County. Grady?
Thank you. I just realized that this is very similar to the whole discussion we had about the visitor's center, and I do apologize about that. In my staff report, I indicated that I've been working with the Miracopa County on a cooperation agreement, which would enable the town to participate in the county-managed community development block grant program. Community development block grant program is a federal program that makes available federal grant monies for a variety of different community development projects for a variety of different cities. Because we're not 50,000 or larger, we're not a direct recipient cities, they typically receive the money directly from housing and urban development. What I'm requesting before you is to request, is a request to authorize me to execute a cooperation agreement with the county. I put in an example so at least you can see what is there from the city of El Mirage. This is tied up right now in the county attorney's office, and we're trying to get it out. And we have to get this to our Board and to the County Board of Supervisors, and the County Board of Supervisors are going to have a very similar motion authorizing their county manager to go ahead and be authorized to sign on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors because we need that extra time to be able to get this into HUD at the end of the month. The good news on this one is there's no concerns or issues because under the arrangement with the county, it's a consortium and we will individually apply for community development block grants. This is just getting us in the door. And without this, we are not eligible for any community development block grant funding. Examples of what we might use that for might be the home-delivered meal program. There might be, you know, senior transportation options. And right now, we have just not had this opportunity for this level of funding. Two and a half million dollars is available countywide to the urban cities that are in this consortium. And so we would be able to get to sit at the table with the other cities that are under 50,000 and participate in this program. So I think this is a a great deal, and I was very surprised when I came to the town that the town was not receiving any community development block grant funds. It's very unusual.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. I just want to applaud the effort because so many times with all the different funding sources out there, OCS, HUD, CDBG, New Market Tax Credit, to get creative like this, this is a tremendous effort. And I totally agree. Everyone thinks it's it's based on entitlement, but it's it's really based on need, and some of it goes towards infrastructure, well-needed infrastructure, or sometimes the tiger grants out there and has stipulations on on how you use for roads. I just want to applaud the effort. I think this is a great opportunity and let's take advantage of it.
Councilman LaJaye?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, there's no cost associated with this cooperative agreement?
That is correct. And one of the beauty parts of this is that out of the two and a half million dollars that is received by the county, they do take approximately, I think it's 10% that they're allowed for their admin overhead costs. And so the nice thing is, as a small town, we don't have the staff having to do the reporting obligations and all that, and that that's really taking a load off of us. So in my mind, that's great. We don't have to hire someone just to get our token amount.
Okay. And that there's no money associated with it, you have a mulligan for bringing an agreement to us before we saw the agreement. Thank you.
Were there any speaker cards for this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then all I need is a motion.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Is this something about this being the last meeting before summer? I guess that's it. Okay. Number 21, consideration of an agreement with Rural Metro Fire Department LLC to provide fire protection and emergency medical services for the Town of Fountain Hills effective July 1, 2017. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, these two items before you, item 21 and item 22, are related and they're tied to one another. As you recall, we have one more year left on our existing agreement with Rural Metro for the provision of our fire services. We have had a longstanding history with Rural Metro, very proud of of the the men and women who provide our emergency medical and fire services here in town. Rural Metro goes back to the days before we actually even had a, you know, the town was not even a town. It was not even incorporated and back in the days when we had a fire district. The reason why we started exploring and doing a agreement a year in advance was we're concerned about the town's finances and wanted to have a handle on what we were looking for in the future as far as these costs. And so the the town attorney and I started meeting with Ted Beam, who I believe I saw come in, there he is in the back, about March of this year, February or March. And we met over the course of a couple months and we we hammered out an agreement that I think that the council should be very pleased with. It's basically maintaining the same service levels, the status quo, as what we have in our current contract. We were scheduled for a 3% increase next year under the terms of this agreement, which is a five-year agreement with two the point is that we're going to be paying next year under the new contract what we would have paid under the current contract. So I think that's a coup both to, you know, mainly to Rural Metro, and thank you for that, and then also for us and doing as much as we can to try to keep to the bottom line here. So the other thing I wanted to point out is the lease agreement. Once Fire Station 2 is built, right now, we're getting approximately $30,000 a year for the ambulance being parked at Fire Station 1, and for them to use facilities there and such. Once Fire Station 2 is completed, then they will be moving from the Frye Center and utilizing our Fire Station 2. So we'll be going from approximately $30,000 to about $63,000 a year on the lease income. So I think we did pretty well here, and we really appreciate, again, Rural Metro and Ted with all his effort and working with us on this contract. So thank you, Ted. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have at this time.
Okay. Any questions? I'll go to speaker cards first. Any?
No speaker cards.
Okay. Questions?
If I may.
Councilman Leger?
Thank you. Just a point of clarity. So 3% is locked in throughout the duration of this contract?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments? The only comment I will make is that we have the most awesome firefighters here, and that's what makes this such a great success, and just so community-minded, go kind of above and beyond just being firefighters, and we really do appreciate it. They are part of our community, and each and every one of them is just a reflect. So just need a motion for 21.
So moved.
And a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay. And consideration of a lease agreement with Rural Metro Fire Department LLC for ambulance storage effective July 1, 2017. Grady, anything else?
I have nothing else. Staff recommends approval of the lease agreement.
Any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the lease agreement with Rural Metro Fire Department as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beam, for attending. Good to see you again. Consideration of changing the town council meeting day and time, beginning in August 2017. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. The item before you is a request to make some changes to our council meeting schedule by changing the day and potentially the time. I want to let you know that, as you know, one of my jobs as town manager is to identify any time we have some potential need for efficiencies or improvements for effectiveness. And one of the things that I've noticed since I've been here, and it just... It becomes more and more clear, is that our council meeting is being held on Thursday nights. We have a four-day work week, and the challenge is that we are not able to really get going on moving on any of the items that the council's acted on until really not even Monday, because I have a staff meeting on Monday mornings, and I give the direction to staff, and we talk about the actions of the council on the previous Thursday. So it's Tuesday, and what I would like to suggest is that the council give consideration... Now, I realize there's been a long tradition of having council meetings on Thursday nights. So I'm all for tradition and all that, but I do think that it would serve our citizens well and the community for us to be able to act on council and implement council actions immediately following council meetings. And so I'm recommending that the council consider changing council meeting nights from Thursday to Tuesday nights. I would immediately, after the council actions the next day, I would hold my staff meetings, change that from Mondays to Wednesdays, so we can immediately start talking about implementing these. And then we would have two days to act on that for the rest of the week. And so I'll give you an example. We had the resident who was here at the last council meeting that spoke about the blind spot on her street. We weren't able to really get to her until that Monday afternoon, and that's... It's a shame, but that's just the nature of how this works. So I think that this would be really an improvement, and I would recommend council changing it as part of this as well. Again, I can go either way on the times. If the council wanted to consider changing the times, I believe the staff report indicated 5:30, but if the council wanted to keep the same time, or they wanted to change it to 6:00, we understand that people work, and so, you know... But as far as the council meeting night, I think that, for me, is the primary consideration before you tonight. With that, I'd be able to... Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Yates?
I'm all for it, daytime. 5:30 is a little rough, but I'll make it. Andrew, I had a question for you. Avondale is Monday night?
Correct.
So it wouldn't interfere?
Okay. And Councilman Brown, did you have something?
I would also like you to look at the possibility of moving the planning and zoning to the following Wednesday after our meeting.
Okay.
And that way, staff would have two weeks to prepare to present what the commission has to present, as well as it will give staff a full week without having to stay till 7:30 or 8:00 for a council and a commission meeting. They'll have a full week off. I'd like for you to consider that.
Let us do this, because there will be some other impacts. What I'd like to suggest, because that's a very good suggestion, we, to actually implement what we have before you tonight, will need to come back. We have council rules of procedure. We can informally implement this for the first meeting in August, and then also come back during that meeting and talk about how we're going to be making some of these other adjustments, and I think that's a very good idea that you have. The other thing I wanted to let you know, too, is we're going to try to maintain the work sessions, special sessions, on Tuesdays, so council will know Tuesdays are just out. Tuesdays are your council official nights. And that way, no second guessing, you know, is it Wednesday or Thursday or whatever? It'll just be Tuesdays, and you know there's a potential that there might be three Tuesdays that month that you might have meetings. The other thing is, we do know that the MMPC is one board that meets currently on Wednesdays, but we think that we can make that adjustment for another night for them. And there's also the Board of Adjustments, which right now, that's not a regularly meeting board, so we can move that to another night, since they probably meet maybe on average once a year, so.
Councilman Leger?
Mayor, thank you. I'm certainly on board with Tuesday. I was wondering if this council would want to consider 6:00 instead of 6:30. Two reasons for that. One is our tradition of starting at 6:30 has been to allow our residents an opportunity to make it into council chambers. Many people come up from the valley, so forth and so on. I think 6:00 would allow that additional time. The other reason, too, is that we often have executive sessions, and if... It would appear to me that our executive sessions now would be moved after our council meeting. I think if we had the Tuesday 6:00 meetings, then we could certainly have executive sessions when needed between 5:00 and 6:00, rather than conducting them at the end of our meetings. And one... That's just... I'm just putting that out to the council as a rationale for why I'd like to move to 6:00. Obviously, we'll vote on it. One other thing is, Grady, you and I had discussed a concern that the Fountain Hills Times had with respect to this whole scenario. We know that the Fountain Hills Times does a tremendous job. One of the few ways residents know what's on the agenda and what the information is, and I know that you've thought about a solution. Could you share that with us?
Sure. So as Councilmember Leger mentioned, we had a discussion about this, because he was trying to figure out the mechanics and how everything would work. So just to kind of give you an idea on right now, that the publication date of the week or day of the week is Wednesday for Fountain Hills Times. So this kind of messes them up a little bit, because when they were getting the Thursday packets on, the Thursday before the council meeting, the week before, they had a couple days to try to put together an agenda... Or I'm sorry, a preview of the agenda in the newspaper. Bev and I've talked, and what we're talking about and what we'll implement is essentially the council will get your... Their council packet on the Tuesday, much like it is now. Right now, you receive your packets on Thursday, a week before the Thursday meeting. We're talking about having you receive your packets the Tuesday, a week before the Tuesday meeting. What we'll do is, we will provide to the newspaper, and the public will put it on the website as well, but we'll do a draft agenda that will go out on Thursdays, the end of the day on Thursday. So that will still provide the same kind of information, and we'll make ourselves available for Bob Burns or anybody on the staff who might have questions about agenda items. And I think that's going to be very, very helpful to them with any questions that they may have, because they won't have the staff reports that they currently receive.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to... I want to offer two motions, if I may.
Can we do some more discussion first?
Oh, I'm sure.
Because I would like to... I'd just like to explain where the 5:30 came from. If 5:30 is... We don't have that many executive sessions, so 5:30 was proposed for a couple of reasons. Some council people have expressed that it would... Sometimes we have rather long meetings, and it would be nicer to have a shorter evening. Also, residents have also expressed that they really don't like to be here that late, and probably more would come if it was earlier. Some cities do have them in the middle of the afternoon. We certainly don't want to move to the middle of the afternoon, but the idea was that we would go to 5:30, and then executive sessions could be after the meetings. And since there aren't that many, this would be more accommodating to people that want to come to the meeting, and it's... It would end the meetings in less time, and we... I mean, it's still the same amount of time if we have the executive session before or after, but this way, when we don't have it, we would be getting out earlier. So going any earlier than 5:30 for executive session is not really acceptable, because there are council members who work and could not do 5:00. 5:30 seems to be kind of the magic number for council and some council. And this is over a long time that people have expressed this opinion. We do have a speaker card? Okay.
Amber Lee Dobrowski?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Grady and Andy. I want to thank you all for your service, of course, and I hope you have a wonderful summer. Mr. Brown, Councilmember Brown beat me to it. I wanted to speak as a P&amp;Z commissioner, as well as working with the staff. I know that they do stay late Thursday nights for you, as well as for us, and I am totally in favor of moving to a night earlier in the week. I will, of course, attend your meetings as well, so it works for me, but I just wanted to offer that I am in support of whatever makes it efficient and easier for your staff and their well-being of their life to be able to go home early on a Thursday. I'm all for it, so I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I did... I should have added the staff, too, that they would like to leave a little bit earlier to get home also. So this... Yes. Go ahead.
In the event we needed an executive session prior to the meeting, obviously, there's nothing stopping us from doing that, but...
Absolutely not.
It would just have to get a consensus, so.
Do you see any problem with executive sessions afterwards?
No, I'm saying...
No, I'm asking Andrew. If we started at 5:30, then the executive session would end up being earlier, too. Do you... Any problem with that for you?
Madam Mayor, in terms of afterwards, that's when most cities and towns hold them, so we're used to doing that. In terms of beforehand, the only caveat I'll have is during the school year when I'm teaching at ASU, it could mean that joining the executive session, if it started at 5:00 or started at 4:30, if it were an hour long, would be telephonically, that'd be driving back.
I don't think we're proposing that. I was proposing more 5:30 and executive sessions afterwards, because I was thinking of you, I know.
I appreciate that.
I know what you do. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Mayor, if I may, just, you know, I'm fine with Tuesday at 5:30. Councilman Yates mentioned coming earlier if we need to, because historically, there have been a number of e-sessions, as you all recall, where we have to typically go into e-session prior to going to a council meeting, because there are sometimes agenda items that need to be discussed prior to that in e-session. So if folks are, you know, okay coming at 3:30 or 4:30, I'm fine with the 5:30.
All right. And discussion? Anyone want to put that into a motion?
Mayor.
You want a motion? Okay. One or...
Two.
Two motions.
Two motions.
Can we do one? Which one do you want the most? Do that first. We need to get a second to discuss it.
Well, I would move that we move the council meetings to the first and third Tuesdays of the month.
And you want to put a time in?
Yeah. There could be disagreement on the time.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Moving to the first and second Tuesday of the month? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero.
All right. Second motion?
And being in the unenviable position of being the oldest member of this council, I would like to get home a little bit earlier, and so therefore, I'm going to move that meetings begin at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor seven...
Even the youngest members want 5:30, so you're not alone. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. That's me, by the way, everybody. That's me.
Yeah, we know. You sound like you're underwater for some reason.
He's in a water park.
Probably is.
Are you at a water park?
He's at the slash pad.
No, I'm at a work event that is at a park, so I'm sorry, it's loud.
Okay. All right. Run. Twenty-four. Consideration of Resolution 2017-14, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Fountain Hills, subject to ad valorem taxation a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, specifically for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness all for the fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. It sounded like Craig wrote that.
On that note, I think we'll call Craig up. He's been waiting all evening to give his 30 seconds. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our finance director, who will be explaining this particular agenda item. Craig?
Very simply, we adopted the budget. We have two outstanding bond debt issues, general obligation bonds. One is for the Soro Road, and the other is from 2005, which was a combination, which included lots of things that I don't recall. This levy will provide the funds to pay the debt service for the next year.
Councilman Yates?
Just for the record, this is not a new tax. This is... Has already been in place. We just have to move that we actually pay it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any other council discussion? And whose turn is it to make a motion? Cecil? No.
I wanted to raise taxes.
I was going to give it to Henry. I'm going to pass this one to Henry tonight.
It's all time for vacation.
Come on, Art. It's ironic.
Mayor, if I may, first of all, I'm not an advocate of increasing taxes unless it's absolutely necessary, but I think it'd be important to point out here is that, Craig, you forgot this. This is the most important thing, I think, in here, is that the rate estimated is 42.59, and last year it was 44.72, so it's actually gone down a bit.
I move to approve the resolution. 2017-14.
I'll second it, to keep the irony.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
2017-14.
I'll second it, to keep the irony.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay. Council's director to manager, we have none. Somebody's, council request, I've got a couple of things hanging there. It's the last meeting. Okay. I want to thank the newly formed chapter of the Fountain Hills Marine Corps League Detachment, number 1439 here in Fountain Hills, especially the organizers, Phil and Debbie Yin and Morningstar, for the very nice program put on for D-Day for the veterans of that facility. There was a short film and a talk by Barbara Hatch, the founder of the Veterans Heritage Project. The Veterans Heritage Project is a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to connecting students with veterans in order to record and preserve the stories of their service to our nation and the U.S. Library of Congress for future generations, and our school is participating in that program. Veterans Heritage Project has a Facebook page with some awesome pictures of the students interviewing their veteran. Fill in and presented special certificates from the Marine Corps of those veterans, the veterans that were present, and there was quite a few there. Senator Kavanaugh and I were honored to be there for that event. Just a couple of things. Fourth of July, don't forget, we're having an awesome Fourth of July event. It is free again this year. We'll have lots of activities for kids. We'll have a DJ with giveaways, just like last year. We've extended the time of the fireworks, so it's going to be lots of fun, and we have these most awesome T-shirts that this year we're going to be selling them to. Show the awesome T-shirt.
Why'd you pay for it, Cecil?
It says XL, it's too small.
These will be available for the public to buy, since we are, we always have the most awesome shirts on, and then people always say, can I buy a shirt that looks like that to remember this Fourth of July? And you could try and sell yours, right? You can't. So those are going to be available. So if anybody's interested, they can actually start buying them now at, on Monday from Town Hall, if you'd like to have one, and that's a good advertisement to walk around town with that shirt on. Also, I want to remind everyone that if you want the summer camp, we got the most awesome summer camp going on here, and there's flyers around, it's also on the website, so if the kids are already driving you crazy, there's really some great things to do here. I happened to see what Cory's section, his little office looked like, and he was like this with toys and all kinds of great activities and games, and everything is really well-planned out, so, and there's trips. There's all kinds of really cool trips, Science Center, Skate Land, Mercury Game, Aquatic Center, and, oh, and Main Event. I've been there. That's cool. So there's lots of great things to do. Just go to the town website if you want to register. And, let's see, and gee, that's about it, unless anyone has anything else? Okay? Then just, as the fire department has so rightly told us and reminded us over and over again, watch the kids around the water, okay, this summer. And on behalf of the council, I want to thank everybody for being with us, and Amber Lee, thank you for being in your third seat once again. You're just always here for us, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. Okay? And we will be, we will still be working, but we will not be officially back until the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. Thursday, Tuesday, and I'll get it right. Third Tuesday. Nancy will remind me. And motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a great summer, everyone.